Good evening and welcome to the May 10th meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency. I'll call it to order and ask the recorder, please call a roll.
Board Member Stapleton?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Present.
Board Member Phillips?
Here.
Board Member Leung? Absent. Board Member Gonzalez?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Nordike?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilor Hoy, do we have any additions or deletions to this agenda?
No.
Okay. I have no one signed up for public comment on this, so we will go to our consent calendar.
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Okay.
Okay. Second by Phillips.
All right, that leaves item 3.1A, the April 26, 2021 Draft Urban Renewal Agency Minutes. Item 3.3A, Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area Strategic Project Grant Program. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Okay. A discussion? Okay. With the recorder, please call the roll.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Yes.
Board Member Hoy?
Aye.
Board Member Nordike? Board Member Nordike?
Aye.
Board Member Lewis?
Aye.
Board Member Stapleton?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Phillips?
Aye.
Board Member Leung? Absent. Chair Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Let's see. I don't show any other actions, so we are adjourned. And we'll move on to the meeting of the Salem City Council for May 10th. I'll call it to order and ask the recorder, please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Leung? Absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here. Hey. Any additions or deletions?
Yes. Yes. I move approval of additions to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Counselor Lewis.
So we have item 6I, which is an information report on sheltering at Cascades Gateway and Wallace Marine Parks.
I think that's 6L. 6L?
You could be right. It looks like an I, but it could be an L. Thank you.
Okay. Yep, it is 6L. Okay. Very good. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, well, please say aye when the recorder calls your name.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung? Absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. This is an opportunity for members of the council to comment on anything you'd like. Yes, Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Mira Namvi Jose Gonzalez. And for those that don't know, I always introduce myself in a different language to honor all the languages spoken in Salem. And today I use Hindi, which is used in India, you know, to shine a light on their COVID pandemic, you know, and I really hope that our country can increase our assistance to them. Now, work's begun on a few initiatives. I want, I was able to speak to both Peter Fernandez, Director of Public Works, Mark Bechtel, and also Shauna Self. She's the city's contracts and procurement manager, you know, so the CD, the DEI Committee, they began meeting. And I'm going to work with them to help increase the contracts going to minority-owned businesses. You know, one of those small ways is reducing the amount of inmate labor. But what I wanted to make everybody aware is that a community's health directly correlates to how many times money circulates in that community. You know, so just to give you, I'm gonna, I'll give you some examples, but one of them is money only circulates once in the black community. Put it, put it another way, $1 that goes into an Asian community stays there for about 90 days. In the Jewish community, 20 days. In the white community, 17 days. And in the black community, only six hours. You know, so, you know, I'm taking these steps to help increase the amount of money circulating the right way in our city, you know, so more info to come. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Anderson, do you have your hand up? No, okay, sorry. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, I'd like to remind folks that we are in the middle of Mental Health Awareness Month. I'd like to take a quick moment to share some insights and resources for people. I've been a mental health advocate for several years now. And I became an advocate after experiencing secondary trauma from my caseload of child sex abuse cases, child physical abuse cases, murder cases, rape cases, and other types of horrific cases at the Oregon Department of Justice. Since then, I've become full circle. I've come full circle, and I'm now a trainer on trauma-informed workplaces. The reality is that a lot of workplaces experience secondary trauma. It's quite common in places like arenas like medicine, law enforcement, education, mental health professionals, caregivers, and more. What I've learned over the years is that the stigma and shame surrounding mental health discourages people from getting help. And when we ignore mental health, we create opportunities for burnout, anxiety, depression, and even suicide. Over the years, I created a statewide wellness movement for the Oregon legal profession, which included mental health training for every single lawyer and judge in the state to reoccur at least once every three years. And over time, my services have transitioned into helping other workplaces, like the Salem Family YMCA, with having trauma-informed workplaces. Unfortunately, I can tell you that the need for mental health services has only skyrocketed during the pandemic. In June 2020, the CDC released data suggesting that one in four adults between the ages of 18 and 24 have considered suicide. We know that there are more studies trickling in from scientists around the world indicating widespread signs of new or worsening mental health conditions across a variety of demos, but most troublingly among children. Another thing I like to point out is that as a general matter, men are far less likely than women to reach out for help when they're not feeling well, according to the American Journal of Men's Health. And the CDC shows that American men die by suicide at a rate three and a half times higher than women. So as a mental health advocate, I have started publishing a series of posts on my Salem City Councilor Facebook page to help increase awareness of mental health-related events and resources right here in Salem. First up is NAMI Oregon's Annual NAMI Walks. NAMI is an acronym for National Alliance on Mental Illness. And they're the nation's largest grassroots mental health organization dedicated to improving the lives of individuals and families that are impacted by mental illness. The NAMI Walks is basically a way to walk to fundraise for their free programs and to build awareness of mental health, which is absolutely vital as a first step to getting folks to de-stigmatize it and remove the barrier of shame from the opportunity for recovery. So on my Facebook page, you can sign up for the virtual NAMI Walks this year. There are several teams going, and NAMI of Marion Poe County is going to be hosting a walk here in Salem. And I encourage you to sign up and join the team, participating at a social distance, of course. That walk will take place on the morning of Saturday, May 22nd, so it is coming right up. Later this week, I will post an interview of the leadership team at Recovery Outreach Community Center here in Salem. The ROCC provides free, and I said free, mental health services and other resources led by licensed peer specialists, people who have walked the walk, and are an excellent resource for folks who are struggling in recovery, folks who are struggling with homelessness, and so on. So please join me in recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month, and stay tuned for more posts on my Facebook page on resources and ways that you can help. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a quick shout out to a staff member today. I've been observing Eunice Kim, our long-range planner, a number of neighborhood meetings and other meetings over the last several months promoting and, and reaching out regarding our Salem, which is, well, I've said it many times, but I think it's probably the most consequential thing that any of us will do while during our time on City Council is, is our Salem and adopt a new, a new plan. And Eunice has been remarkable, and she is making that outreach work. She's gets input from all angles, from all levels, and is so even-keeled, and takes that input and processes it and gets back to people. And she is doing a remarkable job. And I just wanted to mention that and publicly thank her for her amazing work that she's doing for our Salem and for the city council. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to come on here real quick and talk about the North Salem High School tour that the mayor and I took this past week. And it was just amazing, you guys. We learned that North Salem High School is actually the most diverse high school in the state of Oregon. And that's right here in the city of Salem, right here in Ward 1. This is a high school that I went to, back when you grew up in West Salem and had to decide whether you were going to go to north or south with no West Salem High School. So I, of course, chose north and went there and enjoyed my time there. It was great to be back in the building and to see the old architecture and everything that was preserved. That is a beautiful building, if you've ever been in there. But then also to see how they seamlessly have added on and just really blended the traditional with the new concepts of a little bit more modern. But it's a beautiful place. I'm so happy that we, as a community, decided to invest in our schools in this way and invest in this school in particular. Just really a great time with the mayor, with other representatives from our state. And so, great job. Go Vikes!
Here, here. Yes, Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. So I'm just going to take a personal moment here and say it was a busy weekend in the Phillips household. Michelle and I celebrated our 16th anniversary last week. And then obviously, there was Mother's Day yesterday. So a big, you know, heartfelt thank you and I love you to Michelle for, for doing everything that she does to, to make everything that I do possible and, and to take care of our kids. Also, shout out to my own mom. I'll get the easy job of thanking all moms everywhere. None of us would be possible without them. Moving on to the city of Salem stuff, I'll just comment now, I'm really excited about the update to the Woodmancy Park Master Plan update. And I plan to vote for that in the future. It was a fantastic process. I got to complete the survey and see staff presentations at a Neighborhood Association meeting. And I'm really excited about that. And then just moving to, you know, my day job is that I'm an emergency room doctor at Salem Hospital. And today, we've had another, you know, historic announcement. The FDA has found that the Pfizer vaccine is safe and effective for children 12 and up. So as soon as possibly this Thursday, it could be available for, for use in children 12 and up. It's still got to get approved at the level of the CDC, but everything's looking encouraging. It's been, is found to be basically 100% effective and safe. So, you know, the numbers are really looking good. We, we've got nearly 50% of adults have had at least one vaccine in the state of Oregon, and 36% of adults are fully vaccinated in the state. So we've got to do everything we can to get to that 70% partial vaccination, you know, level by, I believe, July 4th is what Biden has set the goal as. But, you know, with the work of Salem Health and the Oregon National Guard and all of the community partners with the vaccine effort that's happening in the state fairgrounds, we're making a real difference. So I'll be doing like a vaccine discussion tomorrow with Oregon State Senator Deb Patterson at 5:30 on Facebook. Go to her website or, or mine on Facebook. I'd be happy to answer anyone's questions. But thank you for the time, and we're, we're making a real difference in our community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and congratulations. Anyone else? I had a chance this week to, along with going to North Salem High School, I had a chance to take a look at the Confederate Tribes of the Grand-
Mr. Mayor, your audio is quite weak, and we're having difficulty hearing you.
Are you really? How's that? Is that better?
Little better.
Ah, crap. Well, I'll just yell, okay? Because right now, I can't figure it out that fast. I visited the Great Circle Recovery Center. It's an opioid recovery center that has been, is being put together. It's in the process. It's now treating patients. It's over on Commercial Street. It's a project of the Confederate, Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron, but is available to all tribal members, all members of federally recognized tribes and other folks who identify with tribal membership. Also, they are going to be open, I think, to folks on Medicaid, to lower-income folks. And it's dealing with opioid addiction, which continues to be a raging problem in this community. Along with methamphetamines, we desperately needed this low-barrier program. It offers comprehensive medical as well as drug rehabilitation services. It's a really outstanding program. I've given, I've left you each a copy of the brochure that they have that I think will, might come in handy if you do run into folks with issues in this particular area. This is a very good program. It, it goes well beyond just a methadone clinic where you come in and maintain. It, it brings together a whole raft of services. And in talking with the folks at the clinic, this is a population that needs tremendous assistance in terms of both the addiction, the causes of addiction, and then the associated health problems that go with addiction to opioids. So congratulations to the Grand Rons for this, this new project. And Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Council, for adding the information report to tonight's agenda. The report provides an update on the efforts of the city and our partners to move individuals to appropriate shelters. The effort is extremely challenging with, with many moving pieces. I have scheduled for your May work session, I have scheduled the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance to come in and give Council an update on the work that they're doing. And there should be time for Council to have discussion of our efforts to shelter our unsheltered residents. That would be an opportunity in a work session setting for Council and counselors to have more in-depth discussion regarding the efforts of both the Alliance as well as the city and our, our partners. And then I will have a recommendation for Council's consideration at your May 24th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is that better, Counselor Hoy? Is it? Okay, good. I just picked a different microphone. Apparently, in this little array, they let us pick microphones from. This must be the one it should have been. So thank you for letting me know that. Okay, we'll move on to proclamations. This is National Historic Preservation Month, and Tracy Schwartz, the Chair of the City's Historic Landmarks Commission, is here. Well, here with us, as, as close to here as we get. Hey, Tracy, this? Let me, let me give you the proclamation, and I'll turn it over to you. Whereas National Historic Preservation Month was established in 1973 by the National Trust for Historic Preservation in order to promote historic preservation and community pride in local heritage sites. And whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas the city of Salem is one of only seven cities in Oregon designated by the Oregon Heritage Commission as a heritage all-star community for its wealth of heritage resources and effective programs. And whereas the city of Salem has four national registered districts and more than 100 individually listed local historic landmarks, including the Elsinore Theater, Gayety Hollow, the Thomas K. Woolenmill, Jason Lee House, and the Southern Pacific Railroad Station. And whereas the city of Salem's hundreds of historic buildings help illuminate our city's past and embrighten its future. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping preserve the city's architectural heritage. Now, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the city of Salem, do hereby proclaim May as National Historic Preservation Month and call upon the residents of Salem to recognize this special observance and treasure we have. Tracy, would you like to say anything about your program?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor Bennett and city councilors, for issuing the proclamation that May is National Historic Preservation Month in the city of Salem. As you note in the proclamation, Historic Preservation Month started in 1973, but back then, it was just one week. So we've come a long way. We've gotten an entire month, which is really great. And when Kimberly Fitzgerald, our Historic Preservation Officer, told me about this proclamation and that I'd have a chance to speak, I started to kind of reflect on the reason behind Historic Preservation Month. And like any good historian, I went back to the primary sources and was able to find the first National Historic Preservation Week proclamation issued by Richard Nixon. And I found a couple lines in it that I wanted to share with you all. He wrote, and I will not try to do any type of impersonation, that America's history is told not only in books, museums, and monuments, but also across the face of the land itself and along the streets of our cities and towns. Our lives can be immeasurably enriched by preserving as an integral part of modern America some of the settings in which generations before us have lived and worked. I think that this beautifully sums up the purpose of the Historic Landmark Commission as well as the Historic Preservation Community. We strive to make sure that future generations have historic properties to enjoy and to learn from. There's something so wonderfully special and honestly unlike anything else to be able to stand where history happened and see what those in the past saw and know deep down that they'd probably recognize it. You know, Commissioner Stapleton, or Counselor Stapleton, sorry. You talk about North Salem High School. You know, that's a wonderful historic schools and, and generations of students, you know, would recognize that as their high school. And historic preservation helps to ensure that properties continue to convey their historic significance, connecting the past, present, and future. But I would say that while we celebrate Historic Preservation Month in May, it is important that we are constantly working to preserve important places in our local, state, and national history. If advocacy only starts when the demolition permit application is submitted, it's probably too late. And so as a community, I hope that we're constantly working year-round to make sure our historic structures, buildings, objects, districts, sites, and landscapes are being properly maintained and appropriately utilized. So I would encourage everyone in Salem to make a little extra effort this month to get out and explore our community and find those in places that are important to them. And ask yourself what you can do to make sure they remain for future generations. How can you help preserve and interpret them in a meaningful way? And then come back to the Salem Historic Landmark Commission with your ideas. You know, what places might be worthy of local or national designation? What interpretation maybe needs some updating? You know, we've really learned this last year that we have a lot to do in the Historic Preservation Community to make sure that we're telling a diverse, equitable, and inclusive history. And the Historic Landmark Commission is here year-round to hear your ideas and to make sure that we're advancing historic preservation in Salem. So with that, you know, I would just like to thank you all for recognizing Historic Preservation Month and supporting the efforts of the Historic Landmark Commission, and also showing that historic preservation is really important to our community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. Okay. We'll move on. We'll move on then to public comment. And I'll try to find. Give me just a second here to kind of sort this out. I've got them here somewhere. There we go. Got them mixed up with the proclamation. Got them. Okay. I'm going to call on first Lisa Letney. Lisa, and I'll say this for everyone who's going to be speaking, you have three minutes. There's a time clock, I believe, will show up on the screen. At the end of three minutes, I'll ask you to stop speaking. And then councilors, if they have any questions, can ask questions. So there you are.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Mayor, councilors, Mr. Powers, thank you for your time. My name's Lisa Letney, and I'm here to share with you my perception of Salem's unsheltered crisis and to ask you to please delay the June 1st park camping ban. Within the first five months, within the past five months, I've become more involved into the homeless camps. I've had a lot of curious questions about my experiences and views. People asking me, why are they out there? Why don't they just have a job? And I don't know the answer to these questions, but what I can say is that while out in these camps, I was shocked at the amount of women, young adults, elderly, disabled that are out in these camps. I look at them, it's just, they look, they're just like regular people like us. I see my sisters and myself in their eyes, knowing that we could also be in these same situations when we not have each other, when we're down in hard times, not having our mother. And I also see my daughter and my son, knowing that when they lost their jobs during COVID and had medical issues, that they also could have been there had they not had me. So I want to tell you about Lynn. Lynn is a disability elderly woman who lives alone in a two-person tent with her small dog in one of those two parks. She can't talk because she's had multiple strokes and it's impaired her speech, and she's unable to get around without her walker. And I don't know what happened to her, but she is scared of people. Lynn has $800 a month allowance for housing, and she needs an apartment on the bottom floor that, that can accommodate her wheelchair, but there are none. My friend Jean looks for Lynn every single day, but as soon as they hit the market, they're gone. Last week, I visited Lynn and told her to stay strong and that she would get through this. Hearing that, Lynn cried. And I did too, because I know I was lying. I couldn't promise her she would get through this. There was a good chance that she will die in that tent, like so many others have. Sorry. The right to adequate housing. The right to adequate housing at a reasonable cost has been recognized as a basic human right by the UN since 1948. After the housing bubble popped and so many of us, including myself, lost our homes, branches skyrocketed, and affordable housing became very hard and scarce to find. And plainly put, Salem, we don't have enough affordable housing for the amount of people that need it. People like Lynn, and there's a lot out there with vouchers that just can't find a place that can take it. This directly contributes to them being homeless. I'm not asking you to solve the problem, I'm just asking you to reconsider when we're doing this, because pushing them out there is just going to push them somewhere else. Where will Lynn go? Where will we find Lynn to help Lynn find the resources she need? We're telling her to go somewhere else, but just not in our backyard. And there's literally nowhere for her to go.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Did anyone have any questions? Yes, Vanessa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lisa, thank you so much for your testimony today. These personal stories help smash the stereotypes that we hear about homelessness and who the homeless are every single day. So thank you for sharing, and I'd be happy to reach out with you afterwards to see if there's any other options out there. We all know on council that affordable housing is an incredibly- We all know on council that affordable housing is an incredibly scarce supply. So thank you so much for your testimony and for your advocacy. I know that you are one of many fierce advocates out there who is helping the most vulnerable among us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Ms. Letney, for coming, for testifying tonight and sharing this story. It's very impactful and the kind of thing that we need to hear. I do want you to know that it's not our intention just to move people out of the park with no place to go. It's our intention to have a soft landing somewhere. I'm very hopeful that we will be able to accommodate almost everyone, especially the most needy. I don't know that we'll be able to accommodate everybody right away, but I do know that that is our goal as we work forward. So just please, stay tuned for more. You're going to hear some of it, maybe tonight in our information report and then at our work session plans that we have to help people find places as they leave those parks. So, thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Letney, I really appreciate what you had to say. The council, we're doing everything we can, but this is a national problem. What, one of the things you said is the funding. She's got an $800 voucher. That funding comes from the Department of HUD, Housing and Urban Development. They set the standard. And our housing authority all the time tells us this isn't enough to move people into places. So we have, in fact, as the council, written HUD and requested that they increase things. The other thing, and Counselor Hoy alluded to that, we have a report today on item 6L where the city manager and staff have, are informing us what we're trying to do to make a soft landing and to find other available places. You know, so, you know, we're not immune to this at all. In fact, every member of the council in private and public conversations feels this is just a deplorable situation, and we wish we could do more. And it's very helpful to have folks like you come and let us know that the community's concerned about it too. So thank you for coming.
Ms. Letney, have you talked with any, oop, lost you. Have you, have you talked with anyone here in the mayor's office about this, like Gretchen Bennett or anyone? Have you talked with any of our folks?
About this one person?
This one person?
I'm working with Housing Authority.
Are you?
What we can try to do to get her something.
We're trying to, right now, we're after some federal funds that would help us pay that difference between the cost of rent and that voucher value, which is, it's just absolutely a disaster in almost every place. So, good. You're then in contact with our Housing Authority.
Yes, but she's not alone. This is big out there. There's so many vouchers.
No, I know, but you gave us a story, and we owe you a response on that story. But no, trust me, we know there are hundreds of people with similar stories. And they're all individual, and they have entirely different reasons for the situation and situations, but certainly you described one that I think we could help out with, or we can at least try to figure out how to. So thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Corey Poole.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. My name's Corey Poole with the, I'm the Chair of the Semken Neighborhood Association, in which the Cascade Gateway Park is located. Since this is an agenda item, I believe I have five minutes. I will try to keep it short, though. I will share my screen now. All right.
You're here representing your neighborhood association?
Absolutely, I am.
Yeah, it's not, not your, not your...
No, no, this, this is, we have overwhelming, here, let me pause this. We have, we have overwhelming direction from our neighborhood associate, from the Semken Neighborhood Association, that this is our number one item.
Okay. Let's get this clock started at five.
I apologize.
That's usually in land use planning, I think, but...
Oh, well, if that's the case, I apologize. A reset would be appreciated, though, if possible. I could probably fit in three minutes.
Why don't we reset him? Dan Atchison, what is, what is the requirement here?
Three minutes, Your Honor, for...
Okay.
Okay. I apologize.
We'll start over at three.
Three minutes should work. I like that you have a timer.
Just a second, reset your timer.
There we go. All right.
Get going.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and esteemed council members. I appreciate you allowing me to speak this evening. I'd like to start by thanking Mark Bechtel and all the public works and park staff members that made a great effort in cleaning Cascade Gateway Park last week. The cleanup job seems overwhelming right now, and so long as camping remains permitted in the park, any cleanup effort is a bit like trying to bail out the ocean. We deeply appreciate the hard work put towards cleaning up our neighborhood park, and I would also like to thank our Salem Police Department, who were able to quickly identify and arrest an arsonist who was living in Cascade Gateway Park last week. Okay, so, it's been a crazy week. We had a homeless camper start a fire which burned down an entire storage unit building, causing a million dollars in damage. The next day, we had several homeless tent sites burnt to the ground in a likely arson event. This was followed by a stabbing in the Walmart parking lot. This, along with the background humanitarian disaster that continues to unfold in Cascade Gateway Park, including dogfights, mental health crises, domestic violence, and a recent series of attacks on park wildlife where ducks and geese are shot with bows, arrows, and blow darts. Unfortunately, does not kill them, they have to walk around with them. In the last week, neighbors in Paradise Island Park were robbed. We had someone rattling doors at 2:00 AM. We had numerous trespasses by homeless campers, including one who, after stealing bags of empty beverage containers off of a porch, verbally accosted an elderly resident. Frankly, we are exhausted. I walked Cascade Gateway Park today, all these pictures are from today, and was once again shocked at the level of trash human, human suffering that one sees if you dare leave the parking lot. More and more campsites in our neighborhood park have been, become walled compounds. There are more threatening signs and greater damage to park trees and infrastructure. I'm relieved to see the draft letter that, for the first time, clearly marks June 1st as the official end to this deeply flawed camping policy. I and the neighbors of Sempa call on you, our council, to allocate all available resources to make sure that June 1st can be a date that the neighbors in the neighborhood can once again safely use our neighborhood park. I and the neighbors of Sempa also look forward to working with city staff and yourselves to begin the long process of restoring our park's natural beauty. We appreciate your efforts. We appreciate having a firm date, and we appreciate everything you can do to help this situation.
Hey, thank you, Corey. Does anyone have any questions for Corey?
Counselor Anderson, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Tom, go ahead.
Thanks. Corey, I've said this before, thank you so much for informing us. You're giving us sort of the other side of what Ms. Letney just talked to us about, an individual person. And I just wanted you to know that presuming, I don't know, is it a Zoom meeting tomorrow or an in-person meeting, Sempa?
Zoom, and we welcome you to attend. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, well, I'll be there, I'll be there, I'll be there. And so I look forward to the discussion, and I think the presentation later on this evening by the mayor, excuse me, by the city manager on 6L will be helpful. And I presume you'll have copies of that for your folks when we talk tomorrow. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Thanks again, excuse me, Mr. Poole, for coming down. I just, I'm a little concerned by one thing I heard, and that is the expectation that on June 1st, you'll have your park back. Although the process has already started, as has in Wallace Marine Park, June 1st is the next step, but it's going to take some time to clear out the park. There have been offers of shelter places that some of the people have taken us up on now, but there are going to be people that don't want to leave, and we are going to have to face the issue of what do you do with someone who refuses services? And the city is going to be facing that, but it's not going to be done by June 1st.
Thank you. Okay. Is anyone else? I can't see you for some reason. I'll just, whoever's running the Zoom meeting, the timer now, for my, in my view, is the only thing showing. I think I have four councilors and...
Go up to your upper right-hand corner and hit the View button and switch back to Gallery. It defaults away from...
Right that one? Ah, thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on then to Tom Ippolito. Tom, are you there? There you are. Your mic's not on yet, Tom. There you go.
Is that better?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the invitation to the city council meeting. We met two weeks ago, and I'm Tom Ippolito, I'm the store manager at the East Salem Fred Meyer store. And one of our topics that we would like to bring forth is the homeless situation, which is really being driven by drug addiction and mental health. And we want to support that in the community and be able to move forward with finding a place that will offer that type of assistance. I want to bring to surface that this is more than a homeless issue for that particular encampment at the I-5 corridor and Market Street. It's really being driven by drug addiction and mental health issues, and we need to develop some kind of partnership as we move forward to really help those individuals get to a place where they can move forward with their lives. The unfortunate thing is that now it has morphed into a safety issue. And I spoke at a meeting two weeks ago about some of the elements, including knives being pulled on associates and customers, solicitation. We had a gun pulled several weeks ago. This weekend, we had a situation where there was the family-friendly restroom, which parents used to dress, you know, infants and, you know, take care of their personal matters, was being used. And when my management team went in there, there was smoke in the air. Well, apparently, some of the people that live under the bridge were smoking either, were assuming meth or heroin of something, some type. And the effect on two individuals was one that caused them, they fortunately didn't need medical attention, but they did need, they did have some effects from the residue that was left in that building. So this is a highly regarded safety concern for our community, for the people that shop our store, for the people that work our store, the people that live around our store. And we want to move forward in conjunction with members of the council and the community to move that camp to a place where it's not an immediate threat. At this point, they're coming in and literally taking what they want.
Yeah.
Taking what they want. And they get violent, and, you know, they've got shopping carts under there, they've, you know, there's a lot. So I, in, in meeting last week, we came to the understanding that it's more complex than we would like it to be, but our desire at this point is to move forward in a way that can constructively bring help in the capacity of drug addiction and mental health. And so that's our, that's our ask at this point. And I, once again, thank you for inviting me. I would like to continue to participate in helping any way we can with the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. As, as you recall, I know, the issues there are really complicated because it is state-owned property and operated by ODOT. And as I promised you at that meeting, you and the President of Fred Meyer, we would establish a meeting with the governor. We'll be meeting with the governor on Wednesday to go over this, myself, Counselor Hoy, the city manager, representatives of your, of the Fred Meyer Organization, to talk with her about the issue, give you a chance again to lay out, lay out the problem, lay out your offer of, well, you know, we want to help, and try to, try to get ahead of this. But without her, without her assistance, we're going to have some real difficulty. So this is what we had agreed we would be doing, and we'll, we'll move ahead on that.
Okay. Would, would additional pictures and, you know, because there are, there are elements in that that are...
I think, yeah. We could, we could have you, you could send us, send the city some pictures. The governor's aware of the situation there. I, I don't think she needs more pictures. I think what she needs is for us to describe just how serious we're taking the problem, particularly how serious Fred Meyer is taking, organization is taking the problem. And, and then for Hoy, myself, and the city manager to share how frustrated we are, because we can't give a concrete answer much of any kind. So if you, if you would like to, though, we will share them with her, and if you'll just get them to me in advance, that would help me out.
Okay.
And I, I've got your card, and I can send, do you have, do you know how to reach me?
I don't. If you want to give me that information, I can, I can definitely send it to you.
Yeah, it's C. Bennett, at cityofsalem.net. City of Salem's one word.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Tom. Thank you for, for joining us. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Nordike, I'm sorry.
No problem. I understand. Thank you, Mr. Ippolito, for your time and your testimony. I appreciate it. And I just want to echo the fact that many of us have been urging behind the scenes to get something done here, so your frustration is shared. We know that it's not a safe space for anyone to be there. And I, as you're probably aware, we have some mental health and drug treatment services in this town, just not enough, not anywhere close to meet the need. I've heard wonderful things about Marion County's mental health services, just that there's not enough of it. So I would love to see our state and our county, which have public health departments, the city does not have a public health department. We don't have the jurisdiction for a public health department, but I would love to see our partners work with us, because that is a creator of homelessness, and it can further homelessness. It can become an unhealthy coping mechanism once you are out on the street. So thank you for sharing, and we appreciate your time.
Yeah. Well, we're, and, and we're really fortunate. Counselor Hoy is the vice chair of the larger regional homeless alliance, and that gives us that kind of, of opportunity with a lot of our comparable local government units. It's now, it's just the difficulty sometimes with the state, making sure we're communicating clearly with them. So we're, we're looking forward to Wednesday and getting a chance to, to talk to Governor Brown about it. So we look forward to seeing you then.
Thank you. Waiting their response.
Okay. Reese Fernandez?
Thank you guys for having me. I just want to thank you for taking this topic. I know that we're having a conversation about some large impactful issues that there are no clear, simple answers to, but I think I have a simpler one for you, so that's positive. I live at 17th and Madison, and we absolutely love our neighborhood. We have a great community here. We have fantastic neighbors. People are constantly out and about, which is lovely. However, we have an extremely unsafe intersection. I know that there's unsafe intersections all over the city, and I feel like that's the response that I get whenever I bring it up. However, living here, I live three houses away from the actual cross at 17th and Madison, and I have two small boys, and we love to walk around the neighborhood. And, you know, given everything that's going on with COVID and things being shut down, that's one of our few things we can do, and it's just not a safe option because of how people drive here. People from Market up to 17th, down 17th, past Madison, all the way up to Sunnyside, and even to Silverton Road, just honestly use it as just a straightaway, rarely stop at the stop signs. I mean, we can hear people speeding upwards of 40, 45, 50 miles per hour, just going straight through. It's a four-way stop, however, people rarely do stop on a regular basis. So with that being said, I would really urge there to be some sort of study done on the area. I've talked to neighbors, we've only been here for three and a half years, but I've talked to neighbors who've said that people have come out before and kind of looked at it, but nothing's really been done. I, I often think that people just don't stop because they want to drive quickly, but I also think that people don't always see the stop signs, because we can hear people slam on their brakes at the last minute and just halt, you know, last minute. So I just think that, you know, with all the issues that are unsolvable, this one seems like it could be fixed very easily if speed bumps were installed at all of the four-way stops, which would make people have to slow down. Also, it might be very effective to have blinking red lights to alert people that those stop signs are coming up, because, you know, approaching from different directions, it can look like maybe there's not... not stop signs there if you're not familiar with the area. So, you know, I just, I want to not only keep my, my personal children safe, but children in our neighborhood and other neighbors and just be able to take advantage of the great neighborhood that we do have and just to be out and about in Salem, but to know that we can be as safe as possible doing that and that there are things in place to help us do so.
Great. Thank you. I'm, I'm really familiar with that. I drive through that several times a week. And I'll tell you, I, your, your idea of, of lights, alerting people to that, I find that, that you can't see it coming up on it. There's some tree branches down that are maple or something there that's obscuring it a little bit. And I know exactly what you're talking about. We'll, we'll talk with our public works folks and see if there are at least some immediate things we can do. The long-term issues are a little more complicated, but I, I know just exactly what you're talking about. So thank you very much for bringing it up. Tom?
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez, for coming. Your 17th is in my ward and then it gets to Councilor Stapleton's ward and you're in her ward. And we understand this problem. I ride my bike on that street all the time and I can see what happens. And we have just started an appeal process to lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour on that street. So we have to go through a complicated process and we've discussed it two or three times at council and we've instructed the staff to set up the appeal process with some agency of the state to, to look at this. And I will tell you, it's rampant throughout your neighborhood. I just had a long email exchange with somebody who was on 21st Street, lives about the same place you do and had the same problems. And so I thought you might be she, but then I looked at my email and saw it was someone else. And then that I sent on to Director Fernandez, who I'm sure know relations, but I sent it to him and he, he replied promptly and is looking into it. And so if you send the council an email with this, then individual councils will forward it on to Director Fernandez and we'll get some sort of response. And I'm sure the mayor's already sort of tonight asked Director Fernandez to give us some sort of response.
Yeah, I think, I, knowing Director Fernandez, he's watching this. He's probably here right now and he's catching the drift here.
Yeah.
There he is.
Yeah.
Knew he'd be here. What do you think, Peter? Can we help Ms. Fernandez out here?
Well, you know.
Take a look at it anyway.
Of course I'm going to help my cousin.
Thank you, cousin. Appreciate it.
Very good.
If you would, if you would send me an email with a location and it's P. and you know how to spell the last name, at cityofsalem.net. Just send me the location and your contact information, we'll, we'll hop right on it.
Yeah, Madison's 17th.
Yep.
I know.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Peter, very much. Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Was, did anyone else, ah, yes, Councilor Stapleton.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I, everything that has already been said second, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for seeing an issue in your neighborhood, talking with your neighbors, bringing it forward to council, coming here and testifying. That's important work and it's part of being a citizen. So I just, thank you for taking the time, for highlighting something and, and acting on it, knowing that you have the power to come forward and make change in your neighborhood. So thank you for doing that. I know the intersection well. I, I lived on 18th Street there in between Madison and Grant for 15 years. So I recognize and know what you're talking about and thank you again for coming forward and hopefully Peter can help us out.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thanks again. Is that everybody? Ops, Councilor Lewis.
Yeah, I, I'll add one thing, Ms. Fernandez, because I haven't heard it yet, but if there are folks that are blowing through stop signs and speeding on the street, they're violating the law. And I know we had that issue on Doakes Ferry Road here in West Salem. And we got the neighbors together and they started calling the police. And the police finally got tired of those calls that they put out the little traps. I encourage you to do that because the one way to get people to slow down is to get a ticket. And that way we don't have to punish everyone, including the ones that are driving safely and stopping at the stop sign.
Yes, thank you. And we have done that and we will continue to do that because you're right, squeaky look, it's the grease. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you again. Erin Westfall, there you are.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, my name's Erin Westfall and I live in Ward One. And I am here to speak with you all about the same issue Mrs. Fernandez was talking of. I've lived in the area for about three years and I've noticed an increase in traffic on 17th Street. I, I do think people use 17th as a way to get quickly north and south in Salem if they're in a rush and want to avoid commercial and liberty and all of that. And since COVID, I've been home a lot more, working from home. And I just have noticed how many people blow through the stop sign. I feel as though it's in equal parts of people who don't give a care and also people who just don't see it and aren't maybe paying attention. There's a lot of tree branches along the street heading north and that kind of block that stop sign. But if you're heading south from Silverton Road area, there's kind of a long corner that comes around and I don't think people are seeing the stop sign as well there. But the thing that really scares me is how many people that live in the neighborhood who have young children, people walking on their brakes, people with pets. I know I myself have lost a pet at the intersection from a hit and run driver. I have almost been hit at the intersection, stopping, looking both ways, seeing a van approaching who definitely wasn't slowing down. And I just kind of waited thinking they're not, they're not going to stop and they didn't. And I was really glad I didn't get hit. But what's even more scary is I've talked to neighbors in the area who have seen children crossing the street and have to stop midway through the intersection because a car was blowing through. And I just know that it's just a matter of time for that really happens. According to the Safer Pedestrians Crossing Program, two people reported this intersection over a year ago. So the fact that it's been on the city's agenda for this long, it's really a liability for the city. And so I'm, I'm really hoping that there could be some red lights installed at the top of the stop signs or above it.
Great. I, I, about 45 years ago, I lived at 18th and Seven, and Madison. And I'll tell you, it was like, I don't think the traffic has changed a lot. It was bad then. And then 25 years ago, I lived at 15th and Jefferson and it was still that kind of a problem. I mean, I think you guys have got, you're on the right track. And I think a lot of it is coming down here and talking to us, making us aware of it, bringing it to, to our attention this way can be really helpful. So really, thank you very much, Erin.
Yeah.
Anyone else want to? Okay. Dr. Suzanne Huffman. There she is. If you'll hit your microphone. There you go.
Here we go.
Excellent.
Dr. Suzanne Huffman, Ward Eight. I have a dream. And I don't invoke the words of Dr. King lightly. I was confirmed at Calvary Episcopal Church in Memphis, a mile from Lorraine Motel. Now, full disclosure, while I don't impose my beliefs on anyone, you need to know that I promise to seek and serve Christ in all persons, loving my neighbors, myself, strive for justice and peace among all people, respect and dignity of every human being. My priests and other mentors that have been part, and others, other mentors that have been part of that campaign had a real impact on my life. So my dream is not for Salem to become Memphis. It is for Salem to become a livable city for all, for our neighbors who sleep outside of houses and for the house as well. You know, it's funny, people often hear me speak and make assumptions about me, not knowing me or about my lived experience, education and so forth. Last fall, this gives you, there was so much compassion toward people who had lost their homes in the fires. Why so little compassion toward those who lost theirs for other reasons? Now, we've heard about some horrible things tonight, but it is not the majority of our neighbors who sleep outside. So we have false assumptions fuel and sometimes are fueled by public policy. What we have is a human rights crisis, a public health crisis. I've seen inadequate, poorly informed services, poor stewardship of public funds, little transparency or accountability with what we are doing. So too often in all social services, we tend to offer round holes to all different shapes of pegs. When they don't fit, those people are considered service resistant and need to be grateful for this hole that's a little better than the last one. Now, I'm part of a strategic planning group for whom best practices is not a catchphrase, best practices to us of those that are evidence-based. Chlamydia-informed care is not a workshop. It implies a deep understanding of the dynamic of chlamydia and how well-intentioned but uninformed services can make things worse. We know the difference between reasons and excuses and which category is actionable. So we are offering to support the city. We hope you will collaborate with us. One of our team has already visited community first in Austin. We're looking at Seattle and Portland and things that work and things that don't work and trying to learn from them. So our constituents really are our neighbors who sleep outside and that's, that's who we answer to. We're going to be emailing you more formal invitation and I hope that some, all of you will take advantage of this invitation. And to quote Dr. King again, time is always right to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Kathleen Quinn. There we go.
Okay, hi.
Three minutes.
Okay, so on May 1st, Riverfront Park was occupied by the Proud Boys during COVID without a permit with open carry, which is legal, intimidating our citizens. The carousel's been closed because of COVID. And I'm extremely distressed over the difference between last summer, when I marched with Black Lives Matter down at the Capitol and the streets were closed off and there was National Guard and there was state police and there was City of Salem Police, every and we were declared a riot once it became dark. I went to the police department Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, asking questions and recording, wanting to know, were they asked to leave? How many police officers were down there? How many state police? How many armed, how many National Guard? They've been declared a domestic terror organization and they were allowed by the Salem Police to take over Riverfront Park and intimidate our entire community.
Whoops.
Sorry, I've got a low battery.
Oh, okay, okay.
The plug, but I've got a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Were they asked to leave? Why is nobody talking about this? From what I've gleaned from the Salem Police, there were approximately 10 officers in the park, in the entire park, while the Proud Boys were there during COVID without a permit. How was that allowed to happen? And why are we allowing it to happen? Why was there such a marked difference with security over Black Lives Matter and supremacist with their hoods off taking over our park where I take my grandchild? I'm going to keep digging. I've called, I've called the FBI, I've called the Attorney General of Oregon, I've called the governor, I've called you. I'm going to keep calling. I didn't sign up to be some kind of activist, but I am now. And my brother-in-law is a City of Salem Police Officer who did overtime during Black Lives Matter, but had the weekend off while the Proud Boys marched. And I know for a fact, I'm not going to name his name and I have nothing to do with them.
I'm sorry, Kathleen, but your time's up.
My brother-in-law.
Does anyone have any questions for Kathleen? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on then to the consent calendar. Councilor Hoy.
I move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item 3.2D pulled by Councilor Anderson.
3.2, say again.
3.2D is in David.
Yeah, great, thanks. Okay. Now, do we have a second? Someone give me a second.
Council.
Stapleton gave you one.
So we have item 3.1A, the April 26, 2021 draft city council minutes. We have item 3.2A, the dedication of city-owned properties as public right-of-way along 27th Avenue Southeast between Kubla Boulevard Southeast and Boone Road Southeast. Dedication of city property as public right-of-way on Kidzep Street Northwest. Dedication of city property as public right-of-way on Mildred Lane Southeast. 3.3A, Woodnancy Park 2021 master plan update. Item 3.3B is the selection of the city and Urban Renewal Agency auditor. And for the record, Councilor Leong would like to record a no vote on 3.2A.
Is Councilor Leong here?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. A discussion. Okay. If they record it, please call the roll.
Councilor Leong.
I, with the exception of what Councilor Hoy had said. Thank you.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilor Hoy.
Aye.
Councilor Nordike.
Aye.
Councilor Lewis.
Aye.
Councilor Stapleton.
Aye.
Councilor Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. So we will then move on to special orders of business. Councilor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One moment, please. I move to direct the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to develop policy recommendations for usage and permitting of events at city parks.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Anderson, for the second. So folks, we know there's a lot of pressure on our parks right now, thanks to the pandemic. Our parks are one of the only places where small groups can take in the physical and mental health benefits of nature. And for our low-income residents, our seniors, our persons with disabilities, our park users who lack resources to travel great distances or reserve a private venue, these parks are priceless. And with the upcoming opening of the Rotary Amphitheater and fitness competitions like Ironman coming to town, we're going to see even more park usage in the months to come. But we know, because we've seen in the news, in the testimony tonight, in social media, in our email inboxes, that there is a lot of community concern about our parks, about concerns about uneven policing, concerns about super-spreader events, concerns about groups excluding other people from using the same public space. So now more than ever, we need to identify best practices to ensure that everyone can safely enjoy our public park spaces so that no single group, regardless of ideology, can monopolize a section of our park for an entire season. So I'm making this motion tonight to help us identify those best practices and to direct the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to research best practices and make policy recommendations about park usage, masks at gatherings, free speech, permitting of special events, and so on. So that's why I'm making the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Have you had a chance, Councilor? I just have one question. Have you had a chance to? Have you had a chance to look at the current permitting process to see how that looks? I haven't looked at it. I just wondered what it looks like.
So the current permitting process has created a great deal of confusion, and I think that that permitting process, as best I can tell, is based on a pre-COVID narrative. And
Well, it is pre-COVID, because we don't have permits during COVID.
So let me, let me finish.
Okay, well.
I would want to, the point is, I would like to say that a lot of what we're seeing in the parks is not working for people. And as we emerge from COVID, we're still going to have a lot of pressure on our park because our city is growing, because we are a destination for a lot of political events and demonstrations and protests and so on. And because with the Rotary Amphitheater coming into play, I'm already getting calls from constituents who are concerned about how we're going to balance all these resources. You know, for example, we know the new Rotary Amphitheater is going in right next door to another amphitheater. Everyone's going to want to use these amphitheaters. But what if you have like a child's educational theater at one with, which has a lot of quiet moments and a heavy metal concert next door? That wouldn't work. So I just want us to identify best practices because our parks are one of our real gems in our city, and concerns about how our parks are being used keeps coming up over and over again. And I'd like us to work with our Parks Board, since this is their wheelhouse, to help identify some best practices for our consideration. My expectation is the buck will stop with us. They'll give us recommendations. There'll be opportunity for public input, and my hope is we can do better as a result.
I'm, again, I, it sounds like we don't have a real clear picture of what the current pre-COVID permitting, which is the only permitting process we have. Ms. Powers, can you talk at all about our permitting process? You're going to be putting that in well before Counselor Nordike's motion goes into a, you know, really gets worked on by the Parks Board. So we're going to be permitting on the 31st. If you're not already receiving permit applications, what, what does that permitting system look like?
Thank you, Marion. And with Director Fernandez's help, we'll try to answer your questions. And if we're not able to, we can certainly report back. As has been shared with, with counsel in my update reports, update reports that are available publicly, we have been working toward a resumption of permits for the parks and streets for the Memorial Day weekend. The permitting, when it resumes, will include some COVID protections. We are making a distinction between public and private events, for example, and any public event will require a COVID safety plan that will be reviewed by, by city staff, by our emergency operations center, and if necessary, by public health experts. As far as our, our pre-COVID permitting and the management of existing facilities, we can't speak yet to the Jerry Frank Rotary Amphitheater. There are policies being developed for that specific amphitheater, for that specific facility. But setting aside that amphitheater, Peter can speak to our, our pre-COVID permitting processes. And again, if it's at a level of detail that's not sufficient for, for counsel, we can certainly report back.
Yes, thank you, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. So we have staff that handles all the, all the permitting for really any public use, whether it's on the, whether it's in a park or on the, on the street. Becky George is in charge of that, and she coordinates all permitted activities. So, so the, the concern that, that two facilities at Riverfront Park would be used simultaneously, that's the kind of thing that Becky handles, and she makes sure that, that that does not happen. So depending on what the activity is, sometimes the whole park is reserved for them, even though they might take a piece of it sometimes, only for a few hours if it's a run, for example. So, so, so she looks at those kinds of things and manages those kinds of issues. There are a series of permits that, that are addressed. For example, if alcohol is going to be served, if amplified sound is going to be used, or they're going to be tents, or is it just going to be a small gathering, you know, like a, like a child's birthday party, but they want to reserve the Rotary Pavilion, for example. So, so we handle all of those things. There are extensive rules that are in place to handle these things, and there's extensive coordination with police and fire, compliance services, and whoever else. They've done this for a number of years and is, is a real professional about it and often handles and mediates the issues of if there's two different users and when is one user going to end and the other user begin so that we don't have these kinds of conflicts or these kinds of concerns. What we've had thus far is we were not issuing permits. One, the state has asked us not to, and if we did, we'd have to send people to make sure they were COVID compliant, and we don't have the staff to do that. So we've made a deliberate choice to not issue permits. And unfortunately, we've seen the unfortunate circumstances of some of those, some of those events. But that has nothing to do, that, that's not, that is no, in no way indicative of how we handle permitted events in, in, once, before COVID and once COVID has ended.
Well, has the, as you've developed your permitting process, and I know it's been around and evolving for years, has the, has that been in consultation with the Parks Board? Do they look at that kind of information? And, and will they know if they get this, what's being asked of them?
Well, if this, if the council, so, so the, the answer is, these are mostly administrative issues, but the Parks Board does ask from time to time. In fact, on Thursday, they will get a report on what happened on May 1st. They asked for that specifically. If this passes, we will let them know that this is, that this is coming. We would fully intend to, to review all of our processes with them and see what, what additional ideas they, they may have or what comments they may have so that we could provide a complete report back to the city council.
Very good. Thank you. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this motion, Councilor Nordike. I, I want to ask a question, and then I'll have some comments afterwards, or probably a little bit both. Director Fernandez specifically referred to the incident that happened on May 1. And I think, I can't speak for Councilor Nordike, but that may have had something to do with the genesis of, of her motion. There has been some confusion in the community about the date that permits were to be reinstituted. There was a city website page that said permits needed to be applied for and would issue on May 1 and after. But I have been told by city staff that that was, the permits, permitting would take place on May 31st and after. And that's created a whole lot of confusion about the May 1 event because there are people saying, look at the city website. It says, we got to have permits on May 1. And there wasn't a permit for the circus that happened there on May 1. So I, I'd like City Manager Powers, if you would, to respond, and then I'll, I'll have some other comments.
There, there never was any intention for permits to start before Memorial Day. That webpage, that section of the webpage that's been referred to was incorrect and was frankly also poorly worded before it was corrected. But in my update reports to you, available publicly, information that, that staff would share with people inquiring to, to respond to an earlier question. Yes, we are getting inquiries, people requesting dates to reserve. In those conversations with staff and individuals, it was always no earlier than, than May 31st. And I do want to emphasize, you know, no earlier than May 31st. Part of the review was certainly based upon feedback from, from counselors regarding, we, we need to, we need to look at resuming permits. It was based also frankly on the Ironman being interested in Salem and a significant boost to our community. And it was based upon, at that time, what seemed to be a positive, in a good way, trend with the disease. That was before Polk and Marion slipped back into extreme risk, which fortunately, we're now back into high risk. So this is still very much a, a moving, a moving target. And I think the key will be that COVID compliance, those safety plans for public events that will be, that will be critical for, for anyone that is reserving our parks or a portion of our parks for a public event.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This just points out to me how unfortunate this was because staff was operating under the assumption that permits wouldn't happen until May 31st and beyond, but the website said May 1. And there are people in the community rightfully so concerned about there was no permit for what happened on May, May 1, even though the website said that. I will be very interested in what SBRAB recommends to us because we've got two real constitutional issues here that the mayor and I and other councillors have spoken about publicly. The first is the First Amendment, which says that we may not like what people are saying. It may be hate speech, but it is protected under the First Amendment. And I know both the mayor and I have used the example of in the 60s in Skokie, Illinois, where probably 20% of the people who lived in that city were Holocaust survivors or families of that. The Nazis, American Nazis marched in the, in that suburb, and they got a permit, and the ACLU defended them, even though their philosophy is abhorrent to most folks. So we've got that issue. Then we have the Second Amendment issue of open carry. And it's not happening at the legislature. And the city council has, we supported a, an amendment to a gun control bill or a gun regulation bill that would have allowed individual cities to regulate the use of open care, firearms in open carry in their properties, including their park, parks. That did not pass. So we're stuck with something that is a state law that, that, that we've got to obey. So I, I would be very interested in what SBRAB is going to tell us about how do we deal with these situations in the future with still following what the Constitution says we have to do and following what the state law says we have to do. So I look forward to some good thorough discussions about that in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, when I read this on the agenda, I came here fully intending to support it. And now, after hearing from Councilor Nordike, I'm not sure. And I'm confused by some of, a couple of the things you said regarding. It sounded like you're, you're wanting SBRAB to talk about how to, how to administer some of the, how to administer parts of the, the park program. And so if you could clarify that for me, that would be really helpful so I could understand. Because I know that, you know, just for the public's benefit, there's a balance. We set policy, we don't, you know, we do the how or the, the what, not the how, and that's really the manager's role. So I just want to make sure that we're clear and that we're not asking SBRAB to do something that's really outside of our lane.
Absolutely. Definitely, yeah, I'm definitely not. So I would just refer you to the written text of the motion, which is where I said, I want to stress that I'm asking SBRAB for policy recommendations, not recommendations concerning administration. Council can adopt policies or ordinance guiding park administration, but both the Salem Revise Code and the Charter Reserve Administration of Parks and the Manager and Public Works Director. My intention is to just bring up examples of some of the things that is troubling our community. And I look forward to an opportunity to really sit down with SBRAB and let folks know the kinds of concerns that we as city councillors are hearing all the time. And the fact of the matter is, you know, I'm not interested in the day-to-day administration, but there are going to be a lot of policy decisions that we're going to have to take a look at. I think, and the bottom line is, we need public input for public spaces. I think people are going to want to have input on, for example, sound implication. I mean, I can hear when there's a lot, a loud show from my house, when there's a loud show down at Riverfront Park. People are going to want to have a say on whether to allow alcohol in our parks and so on, and policing recommendations. We've heard a lot of concerns of police being highly visible at some events and seemingly invisible at other events. And there are a lot of policy decisions that are wrapped up around that. And so, but no, the text of the motion makes clear that I'm not looking for day-to-day administration.
Councilor Hoy.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But then you said something there that also, it's like, I agree with the, then that's why I came here fully intending to support it because it made sense. But then, now you're talking about policing recommendations, and I'm not sure that SBRAB is in a position to give recommendations on policing. And so I keep, I'm sorry, I keep getting mixed messages. And I, I just want to make sure I'm really clear on what we're voting on.
Yeah, I, you know, to me, I think that policing is certainly one of the major questions that we're raising here. And so I think that there can be multiple avenues to discuss this. Having more public input, not less, is not a bad thing, in my opinion. But as I said in the motion, there's plenty of other concerns that need to be addressed, too. There's just a lot of people who want to use the park at the same time. And we have police in parks, and our park users, including our Parks and Rec Board, can provide their perspective on it. Obviously, any policy recommendations they come up with, Counselor, would simply come to us for our final consideration. And I want the benefit of their input because all they do are, are talk, is talk about the parks. So I hope that's helpful.
Councilor Stapleton.
Thank you. Yeah, I had some questions. I actually came in wanting to hear from you, to just kind of hear personally from you, kind of what you were thinking and kind of hash this out. So all of this conversation is really helpful for me. And I guess I have a question for staff, and that is, before the pandemic, before 2020, and all of this changed, how big of a problem did we have with, you know, groups simultaneously, you know, coming into the park or people kind of using it every single, you know, weekend? Or where we had, you know, protests in our park? Like what, what kind of, what were we facing in the time before the COVID?
Yeah, so Becky George is a, is a very, very, very busy person coming up to the event season. Riverfront Park is, is our designated events park. It is heavily, heavily used. But that's what she does for a living, and the events are, are parsed out. And, and the times for them are parsed out. And they're, you know, and, and any issues were mediated out. And, you know, was there some misbehavior related to, you know, people doing some things that, that weren't allowed? Yes, but, but, but parsing out the times was not, is not an issue because that's, that's what, that's what Ms. George does for a living.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just, sorry, motorcycle's going by. I don't know if you can hear him. Um, I guess my concern is, I'm, I'm pretty concerned about the constitutional issues that we're facing here. And I know, and I, I want to believe that, you know, they would come to us with things that would, of course, uphold the Constitution. But then I wonder, well, what would that be that we're not already doing? Now, I guess that's my question. And, and I don't want to, I want to make sure everybody's time is really used wisely and then also that we don't set ourselves up for any kind of lawsuits as a city. I want to like be a good steward that way as well. I'm just trying to voice some of my concerns so we can have, have a better conversation about this. So those are my concerns. I don't know if anybody else is, is trying to hash that out as well. And, and I also don't want to, I know that we're just in such a unique time in our country, and, and I know that we're not ever going back to normal. But I, I also want to have hope and faith that things will calm down. And, and especially when the pandemic, you know, we ease and everything, you know, the restrictions come up, then, then people probably have a heck of a lot better things to do than sit around a park. I would hope that they would go, you know, to a show or, or do something fun and invest in their communities in that kind of way. So I guess I'm just trying to, trying to feel out if this is reactionary to a couple of incidences and kind of what are our risks as a city going into it? Those are the things I'm wrestling with right now.
Yeah, is the city attorney about here? Dan, can you talk just a little bit about this? These folks did not, I guess that has prompted this, did not apply for a permit, even in an environment, let's assume the, and it did. The city website said on the 1st of May and thereafter, you needed to have a permit. They didn't apply for one. They would, had no intention of They would had no intention of getting one. What what is our ability to regulate? At what point can we regulate usage of those parks, and particularly our event park? What can we? I think councillor Stapleton's hitting on some of the issues that are, I think, fundamental here.
Mayor and council, regardless of whether they applied for a permit or would have received a permit, the parks are still open to the public and folks can come to the park in groups. Now, some of the activities that that happen there, you know, setting up stages and things like that, those are those are violations of our code. Those are low level violations. Now, I've heard reports of other activities where they're escorting people out of the park and things like that. And my understanding is that Salem Police are investigating those particular incidents. But even even if we go to a permitting system on Memorial Day, there there still may be groups of people who conduct events in the park without a permit. And our ability to to stop them is fairly limited. And if we know who the organizer is, there's the potential to issue them a citation, which is essentially an infraction under a code, a low level penalty. And it's not a jailable offense. It's not something we can arrest for. And it's not so easy just to say, you can't do this, and we're going to physically stop you from doing this.
Okay. Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am, you know, I'm going to vote for the motion because we are asking the advisory board to give us recommendations. What I strongly suggest so we don't incur any unintended consequences is during that process, that the advisory board get the get the input and advice from our legal staff. I don't want to have volunteers come up with ideas and and bring them forward, assuming that they can, and then have the city council have to deal with the legal application. So as long as the legal staff will be working with the advisory board, I think we have something that we can work with.
Thank you.
Councillor Lewis will try to ensure that the Constitution is observed.
Good luck.
Councillor Nordahl?
Great. Thank you, folks. I appreciate the discussion on the motion. And I would fully expect that we'd have a legal analysis guiding us throughout. I had an attorney, a certain Dan Atchison, advise me on this motion. And I would imagine that our city attorney would be available every step of the way. The Sprab, by the way, are not a bunch of rogues in the night. They are
I don't think I've even said that.
By city by city staff, and they can call upon the city attorney at any time that they need to help them work with these issues. But yeah, we're asking for best practices, policy recommendations. And it's and we certainly have had some events lately that have generated a lot of community concern. But frankly, since I joined council, there's been community concern about our parks. And having toured the Rotary Amphitheater recently, I know that we're suddenly going to get demand for that Riverfront Park space unlike anything we've ever seen before. There are performing artists, traveling shows and things. We're going to see people show up and sign up like Iron Man to come here that have never come here before. And one of the policy decisions we'll have to decide is, well, do we maximize our revenue when we choose between two groups who want to use the same space? Or do we make a point of making sure local nonprofits who can't afford to pay top dollar to use the same space, too? I don't know the right answer to that. But I don't want to have to make that decision on my own. So thank you all for your questions. It's very helpful.
I think that really runs to the heart of your motion, too, is that kind of competitive use. I think it's unfortunate this May 1 issue got incorporated into the discussion. There is going to be a lot of complexity associated with our events park with a new sort of regional size event venue being put into it. It really is going to be substantial difference. And I think the councillor is just in support of her motion, is speaking really to the kinds of conflicts being looked at. And I know that the city staff is looking at this already and will be, I think it'll be helpful for us to get a report on it. I don't know that the thing that I think will become frustrating at some point, at least that's this is how I hear Mr. Atchison talking, is whether we have any way of forestalling the kind of stuff we saw this on the on the 1st, if we can get there from here. But I hope we will spend some time as a council individually and collectively thinking about how best to deal with these kinds of issues. So yes, councillor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. And thank you, councillor Nordahl, for bringing this motion forward. On this topic, there's just some questions I got to work through. It may not be like specific to the motion, but to understand what I'm voting on. We've used like a word, you know, what is our ability to regulate? And I think that that's kind of close to what my thoughts are. But my question is, with the the pre pandemic status quo, like the current state before this last year of pandemics, what did we have more influence as a city on what was happening with the permitting process? And and so my question is, you know, if there is no influence, even when we go back to a world where we can just expect people to sign up, because to me, it feels like there would be. And I just need to know if there isn't, if we're not going to get any additional influence with the permitting process, I would like to know that now. So that's my first question is, do we have more influence if we go back to a theoretical world where we can, where we're doing permits?
And I'm going to ask you, councillor Phillips, are you saying, as an example, what happened May 1, would we have more ability? Or what are you looking at?
Yes, as that example, but just in general, do we have more influence when there's a permitting? So yes, that's specific, but also, you know, only 90, like, not not the only impetus for that question.
Yeah. Mr. Powers, do you want to have one of your quotes?
I'll attempt, if I'm understanding the question correctly, my answer is yes. It won't be more influence over groups that don't care about a permit. But for groups and individuals that do, yes, we would have more influence. And I think there would also then be going back to perhaps the, you know, the genesis for this this motion as far as, you know, competing uses, we would have more influence there because we could then say, sorry, this particular spot at Riverfront is is reserved. It then would though still come, in some cases, certainly will come down to our our ability to enforce and as the city attorney said, to motivate changed behavior.
Thank you for that comment and that answer, city city manager. So it does help. I mean, we talked about a couple of things in this. I know we've got a motion that's before us. It feels like this motion should include the word like review as well as develop recommendations, because it would help me to understand what current state is before we move to a future state. So just in my comments to staff, like when we when we get these new, you know, recommendations that are developed for us to consider, if we could really highlight like where we're departing from what used to be the old state, that that's helpful to me.
I that's how I understood the councillor's motion. I mean, she's not saying rebuild the whole thing. I think she's saying we have a, am I right?
Yes, I would say the word review is incumbent in it. But yeah, I mean, yes, I don't want to start from scratch. I want us to see how how we can do better based on the unusual situations we keep finding ourselves in. And, you know, one of the other concerns I had is that we've seen groups monopolize certain sections of the park by just if they get there first, they start setting out their coolers and their chairs and such, then nobody else can use it. And that's not fair. And I don't care if your mantra is save the puppies. You can't save the puppies can't dominate the same space every night for an entire summer. That's not fair. Got to make room for save the kittens and such. So.
The one I asked about earlier today was the group, the church group that met there every Wednesday evening, whether or not that that can occur if somebody else wants to use it on Wednesday evening, or will we be handing out permits that way? And that's the kind of thing that I think we'll probably want to watch for as well. So I think I think the motion is broad enough to pick up an awful lot of information and provide us with a real sense. And I, I really can't stress myself enough what a game changer that Jerry Frank Rotary Amphitheater is going to be down in our event park. On other parks, it's something else. But down there, that is going to be a real game changer on how that thing's going to be used. And who can use it when? And how how loud is it going to be and all the rest of it? So you guys ready to vote? Okay, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councillor Hoy?
Aye.
Councillor Nordahl?
Aye.
Councillor Lewis?
Aye.
Councillor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councillor Anderson?
Aye.
Councillor Phillips?
Aye.
Councillor Leung?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Councillor, thank you, councillor Nordahl. Councillor Anderson.
3.2 Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
As in dog.
I move that the council adopt Resolution 2021-16, consisting of a supplemental budget for general fund expenditures in the amount of $1,400,000. It's hard to say that.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this just because I wanted the public to see what the city has done because of the ice storm. I know I live close to Bush's Pasture Park, and it sounded like it was a war zone the night of the of the evening leading to the next day, because it was cracking, trees were falling, branches were falling, everything was happening. And that happened all over the city. And so the staff has done a very, very good job. And the report on Exhibit 3, Exhibit, I'm sorry, I'm talking like a lawyer, Agenda Item 3.2A, 3.2D, excuse me, is very thorough. I do have two questions for the staff. And if they want to expand, you know, this was a motion from Mr. Barron. But there is also an item 6G, there's a report from Director Fernandez. So I think maybe they could tell us a bit. And the thing that I'm very interested in is the FEMA, the potential for FEMA to reimburse the city for some of these expenditures and expenditures, and the potential for the city's insurance, which has a huge deductible, but we could still get reimbursed for some of those expenditures. So I'd love to have either CFO Barron or Director Fernandez speak a little bit about both those issues. And if they want to pat themselves on the back for the good job they did, that's fine, too.
Well, councillor Anderson, I'm happy to talk about the financial side of it, the the activities that made up the $1.4 million. It is going to be more on Peters, in Peters area. But the the city has identified all the expenditures that were made to help clean up the from the ice storm. And so we have two avenues for reimbursement. Like you said, our insurance policy up to $1,750,000, but with a $500,000 deductible. And then we have the FEMA organization that will reimburse us a a percentage of our expenditures. We've engaged a consultant to help us sort out and maximize what the sum total of those reimbursements, insurance and FEMA are. And we're currently in in that process now. But $1.4 million, as you said, was a significant amount of money and activity to clean up from that historic storm.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, did you want to?
No, I got a, Barron summed up the finances just just right. We've been working, you know, luckily, we are all well trained in the emergency management system. So we started taking notes and tracking costs from day one. Mark Bechtel was our our incident commander the whole time and was ready to roll even as the ice was building up. And he was also the primary author of the of the report. So I want to thank and congratulate him for the good work. He's on the call if you have any specific questions.
Yeah, really, I, you know, I really want to compliment Mr. Barron, Mr. Fernandez, Mr. Powers, and the rest of your lead staff and and staff in the field on all of these events that we've run into, whether it's COVID wildfires or ice storms, the work done to keep track of the city expenses, to keep us, to have us have the receipt bag we need to have to go in and ask for assistance or reimbursement from the federal government under emergency acts, I think has been just tremendous. I, I think it will, it is making such a huge difference in the fiscal impact of these. We had the horrible impact it had on each of us in its separate ways. But to have the fiscal impact being resolved by you all has been just remarkable. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to add to your congratulations to the folks you mentioned. I had many, many interactions with city crews, both at my house and also in the park. I'm sure some of them knew I was a councillor, but most of them didn't know I was a councillor. I wasn't wearing a bowtie. And I have also had a number of constituents stop me and talk to me and say what a terrific job the crews did. These are the people out on the street doing the actual work. They were uniformly polite and did their work in the right manner. The same thing was true at the dump off spots where I went two or three times. And I know councillor Stapleton was at one, and she reported on the same thing. So Director Fernandez, if you and Mr. Bechtel could convey our appreciation to your crews who did a terrific job in helping us clean up after this disaster. Thank you.
Councillor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And councillor Anderson kind of read my mind. I was going to just give a shout out to the crews who were out there in this weather that was, you know, the rest of us have the luxury of maybe staying at home, but they were out there making the city safer. And it, you know, that's what public service is all about. You know, when the when everybody else is home, you have to be out doing your job. And our crews, I think, were remarkable in their professionalism and their dedication. And people that stepped up to do jobs they don't typically do in a time when it was, you know, in a time of crisis. And I really appreciate it. And I would like to just echo all those comments, thanking them.
Yeah, I'll ditto that, too. The only the only question I, it's not a question, really, a concern I have, is how well our training was in advance of the disaster for the staff that was out there. I'm thinking of the guys with chainsaws, things like that, that whether those, you know, do we have, just I'm not asking you to answer it, I'm just letting you know that it certainly is something that I think is of concern. But I got to tell you, Jake and his crew that came when where our tree went down were remarkable, just great, great guys, really good people. Well, it wasn't just guys, great group of of men and women, really appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All right. If you'd please call the roll.
Councillor Hoy?
Aye.
Councillor Nordahl?
Aye.
Councillor Lewis?
Aye.
Councillor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councillor Anderson?
Aye.
Councillor Phillips?
Aye.
Councillor Leung?
Aye.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Councillor Anderson. Okay, we'll move on then to information reports. Any questions? Yes, councillor Stapleton?
I had a few about a couple of different things. Do you want me to just rattle them off?
Sure.
Okay.
Have at.
First of all, on 6A, I'm just really thank you, Mr. Mayor, for appointing me to the Library Strategic Planning Steering Committee. I'm really looking forward to this. I am was pleased to see the Equity Lens Workshop that we'll be doing, kind of right off the bat, to make sure to get some community input and stakeholder engagement to really make sure that we're doing the best that we can do with this planning. And then also on on 6E, there, I believe that this is for the Center for Hope and Safety. Am I correct in that? Yes, I thought so. And I am so excited about this. There's just no word. I am so excited that they're getting this, that it's, they're going to be able to get enlarged and get some housing there, from what I understand, to help these women and to help these women and, and men that are in domestic violence situations help. Actually, I don't think they help men, but women in need of crisis, and they're there to support them. I'm just really, really thankful that they're, they're getting that. And then I had, I did have a question on 6G, and that is the February Ice Storm Response and Recovery. I was wondering how much tree canopy we've lost or if we have done that, I guess, analysis yet? Is that something that we're going to do later, Mr. Fernandez?
Yeah, Counselor Stapleton, we will do that later. Mylan Davis, our urban forester, is still very, very busy. Calls are still coming in for cleanup duty, then we still have to go out and grind stumps, and we're still managing the a lot of the detritus. You know, you can still, you can still pick up wood chips at Busch Park, so on the, on the Mission Street parking lot. So, but we do fully intend to do an analysis that will then help us guide, you know, our future planting program, so we will.
Okay. And will, will you guys bring that back to council just to kind of, because I know we just did this last year before the storm, if I'm remembering correctly. And so I would love that again, and maybe just sent as an information report to us again, so we can kind of see what's going on.
Yeah, we provide, we provide an annual tree report to council, so either, either the future report will incorporate it or we'll send a special report depending on the timing of when the analysis is done.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And lastly, on 6L, I just wanted to thank the city manager and Gretchen Bennett for meeting with us counselors individually, just to kind of help answer questions and get feedback and kind of take the temperature of the council and, you know, see what we're wanting to do and the ways that we're wanting to move on this really important topic. And so it was really helpful for me as a counselor, especially a new counselor with such a huge issue facing us, to be really prepared and have the opportunity to ask so many questions. So thanks to staff for that special time that we had together. So thanks.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a few questions specifically about 6A, the Library Strategic Plan Steering Committee.
Yes.
Someone who's able to answer some of my questions?
I'm here.
I don't know who, who said that.
Go ahead and ask your question.
Yeah. I'm the city librarian, I'm here.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see.
Norm Wright's here and I'm here and the city manager's here. We'll, we'll answer your questions.
Thank you. So I was just wondering, in terms of the committee, I understand where the makeup is comprised of members, but is there a way to kind of like get the demographic profile to get a better picture, considering, you know, we, earlier this year, we agreed to pass a resolution that included in declaring public health racism as a public health crisis. So when it comes to decisions in terms of who we're putting or appointing to other commissions or work, work sessions, are we including an equity lens in terms of placement?
We don't have an equity lens in place. It's under, it's being worked on. It's part of a process in front of the Human Rights Commission. I think we'll see it in the next few weeks. What we did do, if you'll recall, I held that back in order to improve the diversity on it. I, I got to look at it closely and I, I wasn't, I didn't feel it had the kind of representation that we are trying to achieve, that it was in the right direction. This is a committee, I, to have it described as a strategic, strategic planning committee, I'd sort of turn it over to the city manager or Sarah to talk about, to kind of explain what the role of this is.
So it is a, it's a group that's basically going to be looking at the data that's gathered and help to put together a, take all the data that is gathered and put it towards actually creating the initiatives and goals that the library will be having for the next five years. One of the things to note about it is I would be happy to provide, once I actually have the steering committee passed and going along, any demographic information. I didn't have demographic information other than a few of the, you know, I know who the lab members are, I know who the TAB members are and who the, the friends in the foundation are, members are. But I don't have the demographic data for any of the other groups other than our city staffer who is also on it, Alma Plisencia.
Will you be doing outreach, Sarah?
We absolutely will. That's a great question.
That's really where we may accomplish some of the goals I think Counselor Leung's talking about.
Yes, we have about 50 spots for, I mean, we'll have a survey that goes out as well, but we have about 50 spots for focus groups and one-on-one conversations. And we will be looking widely for a diverse perspective in those, those focus groups and one-on-one interviews.
Counselor Leung, go ahead.
I might have two additional questions as follow-up. So on the second paragraph and the last sentence, it says, it's going to be co-facilitated with existing diversity, equity, inclusion collaborators. Can you define who that is? And then the second question, is there going to be any opportunities for like public members or members of the public to actually be part of this committee at all? Because I mean, you have folks from different commissions and boards, but how about actual committee members who utilize, who might have utilized the library to be able to have their voice and input?
They will be, the, the commission is, or whatever it is, the strategic planning group is who you see on this that I brought forward. I am expecting that the work will include substantial. And I, and that's why I'm asking Sarah substantial outreach to accomplish the goals of including the public and the public's need.
We've gathered, you know, Eunice has, Eunice Kim, who we've talked about earlier with the R-Salem Vision, has already sent me, you know, pointed me to the place on her website with the different groups that she's done outreach with. I know that the Human Rights Commission also has affinity groups that they work with throughout the city. And so I'm absolutely committed to reaching out broadly to those groups to invite them to be a part of these focus groups and the one-on-one conversations. And again, the first piece of this is actually developing an equity lens. And the, the DEI work that has been done already is with our own Alma Plisencia. She is a member of the Oregon Library Association. She's actually the co-chair of the Oregon Library Association's DEI Task Force, EDI Task Force, they use a different acronym, but it means the same thing. So she's done a lot of work building a a toolkit for libraries in Oregon on EDI, DEI, and working with them, so.
Will you be giving us updates? I think Counselor Leung is asking the right questions on, on how this will affect the community, the diversity, the diverse community we have. Will you be giving us updates as to kind of what's going on and kind of keep us informed as to how this is progressing and what you're finding?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
And will, will your lens include, I hope, looking at, if you have it, the demographic, the demographic outline of the community and the demographic use of our library to make sure they're in some sort of balance that the library serves more than you know, a small, a small part of our community?
I think that's a great question. The equity lens is being facilitated by an outside facilitator. That workshop is. I'm going to be meeting with her tomorrow to actually talk about what the, the nuts and bolts of this Equity Lens workshop will be. We've been waiting to have this announced and have this public conversation before moving forward with that. So I can absolutely ask that that be a factor and something that we look at.
Yeah, I would expect it to be. And also that we get a chance at some point along the way here to see the equity lens you develop.
Yeah.
As you start looking at this, what does it look like, an equity lens for a library look like? Because we're being challenged as well to take a look at broader, at an equity lens broadly.
Right.
It's one of the challenges for each of our boards and commissions. How are they resolving the issues
Right.
included in, in DEI?
And my understanding is that this is an equity lens for the project for the, for the strategic plan, but it's something that we can take and make more broad if, if that.
I'd just be curious what it looks like, whatever you come up with. I just, yeah, I'm just interested.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions for Sarah or Norm or, yes, Counselor Anderson?
I, if we're done with this issue, I've got, I want, I have another report I want to talk about.
Okay, let me just make sure. Anybody else want to talk about the library strategic planning process? And, or committee? Okay, excellent. Thank you. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions are about Agenda Item 68, which is the update on multifamily housing development. And I'll just make a few comments, and I did speak with Lisa Anderson Ogilvy earlier today, and she may have foisted this off on Eunice Kim, which is fine with me, but here's the things that I'm kind of interested in on this report. First one is, we changed the zoning to accommodate new building and new multiple housing, but that hasn't happened yet, and I wonder how much of a lag time there is. And I specifically look at from the late 90s and early aughts to now, even acknowledging the recession in 2007, 2008, 2009, every single housing element has, the new buildings have gone down, and we know we need housing. A single-family, duplex, multifamily, all have been vastly reduced from what they were in the late 1990s and early aughts. And my last comment and concern is about we've got all these new, and I think this really folds into our Salem, but as well as the Climate Action Task Force that I and other counselors, counselors Stapleton, no, excuse me, Counselor Nordike and Counselor Gonzalez are on. The new apartments and homes, how do they relate in the zoning code vis-a-viss commercial centers, neighborhood hubs, employment centers, the, the corridor hubs for the, for the mass transit? How is that all gonna, how does the multifamily housing development fit in with both our Salem and the Climate Action Plan, which will be forthcoming?
Lisa Anderson Ogilvy, your planning administrator, and I told Eunice she didn't need to be here tonight. It's one of her few nights without a night meeting for our Salem, so I let her take the night off. But I'll try to answer, I think, those three questions in one. So if I, if I lose the thread or don't get to it, please ask me again. So the first question, I think, was about some permit history that wasn't included in our report, but I saw was on a local blog about permit data for a single-family, multifamily from the early 80s through, I think that website went through 2014. And so what that showed is that there were much more housing units built across all spectrums in Salem in the 80s and 90s, and then that kind of dropped off. Even single-family and multifamily both dropped off, of course, during the recession, and now they're kind of growing back. But still, not the kind of levels we saw being built across Salem in the 80s and 90s. And I think there's probably a combination of reasons that, that housing is built or not built in a community. It's not all zoning. I'm sure it has to do with, you know, the national economy or recession, migration. Obviously, in Salem in the 80s and 90s, the land that was easier to be built on was more plentiful than it is today. I'm sure you've heard from developers and builders that the land we have today is, you know, steeper, more expensive to serve and build overall. One of the things that does affect that, of course, is land supply. And so I know we talk a lot about our housing needs analysis and how it shows we don't have enough multifamily land. I think it's important to remember that the city did that exact same study 20 years ago and also had a deficit of multifamily land at that time, a greater deficit, I think, than we have today. It was close to 300 acres, I believe, of multifamily land. And the planners and planning commission and council did the really hard work of identifying land to be converted to multifamily, and they went through and rezoned all of that land through many contentious hearings in the late 90s and early 2000s. And that is the land that's available for people to build apartments on. So I think our report demonstrated there's been about 3,000 multifamily units built in the last five years. Almost all of that is on land that was rezoned by the city the last time we did our housing needs analysis, or they, that was before I was here, in the late 90s. So it, it is an important process to go through, and land supply is really important, and hopefully, we will all keep that in mind as we get to the end of this year and bring about 200 acres of rezoning for multifamily land to the council, and remember how important it will be for the next 20 years. I think your other question was about where we cite that multifamily land, and so I, I don't think in the 90s that they were as concerned about trying to get that multifamily land near services and transit. I think it was probably a goal, but it was very difficult to do. And so at some point, you just have to kind of pick land that's vacant to, to meet that need. In our Salem, we're trying to be very strategic in where we pick our multifamily land, but there's not a ton of vacant land, so we're also constrained by that. Obviously, as we talked about, when Eunice brought the vision to the council, our goal is to try to concentrate as much of that as we can in our major corridors because it'll be served by transit. It'll be near existing, you know, retail, commercial, schools, that kind of thing. In the areas where we're not able to put it near the core, we're trying to create mixed-use centers near that new multifamily in the hopes that new services will be built there. That's, for example, our strategy in West Salem. So we're proposing new multifamily in West Salem, but we're also proposing it near a mixed-use center with the idea that those things would grow together and be served together. So that's our strategy. We're trying to achieve those things strategically through our Salem, and I think maybe I answered your questions, but if I missed one, I'm happy to go.
You did very well, and thank you for the answer.
You're welcome.
I, you caused a question in my mind, Lisa. You know, in the 90s, when they looked for that acreage, one of the things that council did was just rezone an entire swath of single-family homes in the inner northeast neighborhood in Counselor Stapleton's ward, once my ward, that, that created some real, it was an interesting problem because it was a very stable, single-family but affordable, single-family neighborhood, as you think about it. And it seemed to kind of put it under some interesting pressure. And I'm wondering, well, we have to look at something like that where we have to come in and, in order to meet the goals that Tom's talking about, will we have to come in and do, you know, a whole, that whole area up over by South Salem High School or something like that? I mean, will that, will that occur? Or how, how will this come to us, do you think?
It, we're not intending to rezone existing single-family neighborhoods to multifamilies to meet our need. And, and I think it's probably important to remember that later this year, the summer, hopefully, we'll be bringing forward House Bill 2001 rules. So basically, under state, you know, provisions, all, all neighborhoods now can, can have some level of infill, you know, with a duplex or triplex or fourplex, depending on lot size, which makes a lot more sense to allow people to add that small infill where they want to versus, you know, rezoning existing neighborhoods. And I know that that put a lot of strain on refinancing and rebuilding for those houses. And then we spent, you know, a lot of time making code amendments to say, no, you can, you can rebuild though, so that they could get financing, et cetera. And so it created more problems than it really solved. So no, we don't intend to rezone existing houses to meet our multifamily need.
Great. So the, the 2001 House, or whatever the House bill you talked about allowing for, for up to fourplexes and things, will that be part of our multifamily then inventory? That's part of your way of meeting that 200-acre shortfall?
Yeah, it, it can be, under the state law, we can assume that 3% of our housing need will be met that way. Because we won't have any data to show that it would be, meet more than that. That's the kind of safe harbor that they, they wrote into the bill that cities can assume 3% of their multifamily that way. So we'll still, we'll still need a lot of multifamily land. It won't by any means meet our projected deficit.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, thank you. The mayor's discussion about changing zones and infill and wards one and then Ward two, I caught that, Chuck.
Just fun to wake you up there, man.
Yeah, yeah. Reminded me of another issue that I wanted to discuss if you could, and that is ADUs. We spent a lot of time on ADUs and getting them in, and part of our goal was to increase density in these close-to-the-city-center neighborhoods. And I know the SDCs for S, I love this, the SDCs for ADUs have been 86th. How's that?
Good.
Yeah. So, you know, we've said, if you build an, an ADU, you don't have to pay SDCs. So I'm just curious as to how, how's that working out?
Yeah, after the council reduced the SDCs, we did see the number of them go up. It's still a pretty limited number. I think the report said 77, I think, that we've had built. And I think at this point, the constraining factor, it's not really the zoning, it's not the SDCs. I think it's really the cost of construction, especially today with, with lumber and everything going up so, so much, that it's, it's really made it difficult. People have a great idea, and then they, you know, they come in and we explain the pretty easy permitting process for them, and they don't have to pay the SDCs, it's just the billing permits. And then they go away and say, oh, well, now I talked to a builder, and I realized how much it is, and I can't afford to do what I wanted to do. So.
Great. Okay. Any other questions for Lisa, or any other information reports? All right, then we'll go to first readings. Who's doing this?
Ordinance Bill number 4-21, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 2527 and 2547 Robbins Lane Southeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District and Turner Fire District.
Good. Counselor Hoy, do you want to give me a motion on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move City Council conduct first reading of Ordinance Bill number 4-21, annexing, applying City of Salem RA residential agriculture zoning from Marion County UT 5, Urban Transition 5 acres, and Marion County UT 10, Urban Transition 10 acres, withdrawing from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District and Turner Fire District, and approving annexation for a 47.23 acre property located at 2527 and 2547 Robbins Lane Southeast, 97306, subject to three conditions proposed by the petitioner as mitigation for tree removal conducted through a lawful timber harvest between April 2018 and June 2018. One, any future development of the subject property shall require compliance with SRC 808.050 tree planting requirements. However, the minimum diameter of the trees to be planted shall be increased from 1.5-inch caliper to 2-inch caliper standard, and replacement tree diversity shall be increased by planning not less than five species authorized in the city's Tree and Vegetation Technical Manual. And two, prior to recordation of final plat for, for any partition, subdivision, or planned unit development or occupancy of a commercial development, the applicant shall grant $15,000 to the Salem City Tree Fund. And three, prior to submittal of any application for a land use approval, limited land use approval, or permit for developing the subject property, applicant shall enter into an agreement with the City of Salem, acknowledging and agreeing, the City of Salem will not record a final plat for any partition, subdivision, or planned unit development on or before July 1st, 2023.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Lewis. A discussion? Okay, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
I have the same cautions as I did for the public hearing.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Counselor Nordike, this next one is yours.
All right, one moment.
No problem. Or I can have, I can have, we do it if you want, just get it moved along, either way.
Yes, that would be fine. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hoy, would you?
I move City Council conduct first reading of Ordinance Bill number 5-21, annexing, applying City of Salem RA residential agricultural zoning from the Marion County UT 5, Urban Transition 5 acres, withdrawing from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District, and approving annexation for a 2.65 acre property located at 3880 Creighton Creek Road South and city-owned lands.
I'll second that. Okay. Any discussion? All right. If you please call the roll.
I'm going to read it into the record first, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Ordinance Bill number 5-21, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 3880 Creighton Creek Road South and city-owned lands, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez. Counselor Gonzalez. Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. And that brings us to the end of our evening together. So we are adjourned.